We're live. It takes a minute for people to come in, but.
All right, what's that? Okay, I'd like to call this Monthly Board of Education meeting in order, please. Mrs. Slunt, roll call.
Dr. Cordelino?
Here.
Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mrs. Fano?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien? Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Suckerman?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here. At the end of the flag salute, I would ask everyone to remain standing because we had a member of our community who recently passed away, but I'll go into more of it at the end of the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
If you remain standing, we had one of our citizens, many of you know him, Joe Quaid. Joe was in town for many, many years. He passed away last week at the age of 97. Joe was a World War II veteran. He was in the paratroopers, he went into World War II in 1943, and served to his conclusion. Joe was a volunteer for everything and anything that came along that was needed in Montville Township. His dedication, both to the VFW, to the Kiwanis Club, to the recreation, and to various other outfits, was really, really outstanding. But the thing I believe he was most happy with was when he worked in the Montville school system. Joe started as a substitute and worked for many years in the high school. Kids still speak of Joe because he was there for the kids and the kids related to him, even though there was such a big age difference. Joe's wife Sue have lived over in Green Meadows by Town Hall. And I know that I knew Joe on the Recreation Committee for over 20 years I served with him. And I always knew if there was anything that was needed by the town, but more importantly, for the kids. Joe was there and assisted us. So if we could have a moment of silence on his behalf, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much. Katene, would you read the Sunshine Law, please?
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided an public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on July 23, 2020.
All right, we don't have any high school student representatives here. Section F is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Roftar?
Okay, I have a number of things that I want to touch on, hopefully briefly this evening. I did indicate on the agenda that as per the executive order of the governor, all public schools in New Jersey must be closed for in-person attendance on Tuesday, November 3rd, that's Election Day. So November 3rd will be a virtual learning day for all of our students. We are going to try to work on flipping that week, having our virtual Wednesday then be an in-person day, but we need to work that out. But we do know definitely that we are not allowed to have students in attendance on Election Day. I do want to congratulate Christopher Butchko, one of our teachers at Montville Township High School. Last week, the New Jersey Department of Education made their announcement of the County Teachers of the Year for the 2021 school year. And Chris was selected. We are extremely proud of him as the Morris County Teacher of the Year. Chris now moves on to the statewide competition for the selection of the New Jersey Teacher of the Year. And that announcement is typically made in conjunction with the New Jersey School Board's Fall Conference in October. So we are extremely proud of Chris. He is very well deserving of this honor. And so we're proud to recognize him. I will be sending out tomorrow information to parents on how to download the app for the daily student health screening. That will be going out in several versions. I will post it in Schoology, we'll send out a school messenger alert. I really want to stress to people, to parents in particular, the importance for social responsibility in terms of completing the app on a daily basis. You know, we're doing this, it's the honor system. It's really important. I know Montville Township has done an excellent job over the summertime in terms of managing the cases of COVID-19 within the community. I'm hoping that that strong performance will continue once schools open. But that really hinges on parents and staff members not coming into the building when they are either exhibiting symptoms or are not well. So hopefully everyone will continue to do their job in that regard. I have heard over the last couple of weeks from a number of parents expressing their concerns about what's going on with SAT testing. Certainly, you know, if you have students, you know, juniors or seniors, you're aware of the fact that a number of testing sites have canceled the testing and students have been left with very little options to reschedule that test. So the high school administration and the school counseling department are examining our options in terms of the logistics for us to possibly offer in-school administration of the SAT. So when we have some additional information on that, we will certainly share that. But we are definitely looking into it. I do want to indicate that this evening, I am indicating, although it's not something that the board needs to take action on formally, but I'm recommending that the high school and the middle school open for in-person attendance effective Monday, September 21st. Our staff, the central office staff, supervisors, principals have worked very hard over the last two weeks to secure replacement teachers and substitute teachers. We still are, you know, processing substitute applications to expand our pool. We're hoping that that will continue. I don't think any school district can ever have enough substitute teachers. But we feel that we are in a position that will allow us to open for in-person instruction on September 21st. That will mean that we will have, we'll start the school year with nine days of virtual instruction for our middle and high school students. That instruction will be in those early dismissal, in that early dismissal schedule mode. I think all the planning has been put in place for that to work effectively for those nine days. And, you know, we look forward to opening our doors for in-person attendance at the middle and high school very soon. So that concludes my remarks. I'll turn things back over to you.
Thank you, Renee. Would you also send Chris a letter on behalf of the board, congratulating him and wishing him good luck at the state level? And I'll be happy to sign it. I think it's, excuse me?
No, I was just going to ask, will Chris be invited to a meeting or Zoom a meeting with us to?
Yeah, yeah. We will certainly do that. I thought since we were still in summer mode, that before school started, that it would be better for us to wait until we were back in school to honor him. But yes, we will definitely do that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew the news because it's so exciting.
It was on Twitter, too, which was nice. Business administrators' report, Katene? Any?
No, let me wait.
Okay. Section G, Finance and Facilities Committee, Karen?
No report.
Okay. Michael Palmer, Curriculum and Instruction?
No report within the next hour or so. Maybe Mrs. Woodring and I will talk about setting up a date.
Thank you, Mike. Policy and Personnel, Dave?
No report.
Okay. Michelle, Communications?
No report.
Safety and Security, Mr. O'Brien. I don't believe they have met. No ad hoc committee delegates? New Jersey School Boards, Karen?
Just a reminder that Workshop 2020 will be virtual October 2021 and 22. They do plan on having lots of programs that will be recorded and available on their, on the website for the next year. And Legislative Committee will be meeting on the 12th. The Executive Committee will be meeting on the 16th. And the Board of Directors will be meeting on the 25th.
Thank you. Just going back to policy for a moment. Dave, in the latest issue of School Leader, there was a sample policy they're recommending connected to the virus. So if you don't have a copy of that, I'm sure Casey can get you one. They're asking us to take action on that. We can do that at our next meeting or two, okay?
Casey, I'll talk to you about it.
Oh, great, okay. Educational Services Committee, Commission, Mike Rappaport?
Yep, hi. So the ESC is going through the same issues that we're having in our own district. They're trying to open the schools four days, I'm sorry, five days a week, four hours a day with virtual options for those who need it. And they're also trying to organize the classrooms so that the kids don't need to wear masks since a lot of the kids, the mask can really interfere with what they need to do within the classrooms. So they're trying their best to make those accommodations in place. Also, they had had a lot of concerns over the number of staff. They did furlough a lot of staff in the beginning of the summer as the school districts were looking to be all virtual. But as the various school districts in Morris County started to go back in person, they ended up rehiring most of that staff to service all of the other schools. And the other thing of interest is that the non-public schools in the county are, have a large increase in special needs services and that they are requesting it through the ESC. So that's just, you know, it's interesting that the non-public schools are tapping into what the ESC can offer to help their kids as well. And that's pretty much it. The next meeting is September 9th.
Thank you very much, Mike. Drug awareness, Mr. Palmer?
No report. We haven't met since before the pandemic.
Delegates, PTC delegates? I don't know if anybody's been meeting, Karen?
Nope.
Cedar Hill?
I don't think anybody's met over there.
I don't think anybody's met. Has anybody met? Give your report now. Okay. Public participation, before we have that, I believe there's an addendum?
There is a personnel addendum.
Personnel addendum, which would be under L, I assume?
Yeah.
And that would be? If you could just read it, because I don't think the public has it.
Okay, it is Personnel Appointment, the approval of the appointment of three long-term subs, one in Social Studies, one in English, and one at the elementary level.
Thank you. No other addendums? Okay, so that would be what, 87, 88, 89?
Eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety.
Eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 87 was on the next page. Thank you very much. This is an opportunity for citizen public participation on any of the addenda items. If you have questions other than what's on the agenda, there's also an opportunity at the end of the meeting for you to be heard at that time also. So do any members of the board have a question on the agenda? If not, I will then open it up to the public.
So I would, as I do each meeting, indicate that if you are watching us in YouTube and you would like to participate by asking a question, making comments, that you follow the directions to join us in the Zoom webinar. And once you are in the Zoom webinar, if you could press the button to raise your hand, and then we will recognize people one by one. I will start by recognizing Ms. Elias.
Ms. Elias, any item on the agenda?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, hi, hi. Actually, I changed what I was going to say again. And I just want to say thank you that there was obviously a lot of hard work happening at the administration level. And that is awesome news for our students that we're going to be starting September 21st. So thank you, thank you for that. I did just have a question about when we will be going into Phase Two and for the reopening plan. And will that still include that Wednesday off, virtual?
I'm not sure what you mean by Phase Two. By Phase Two, do you mean when we might be in a position to open for a full day of instruction?
That is correct, yep.
Yeah, we'll have to determine that a little bit further down the road in terms of what that model will look like.
Okay, okay. But obviously, if we make it to the next phase, then there'll be more in-person instruction ahead. And do we expect that phase, if everything goes, you know, smoothly, do we expect that sometime in October? The phasing to the next step?
I cannot really give you a solid date. I think we need to watch, you know, what happens in terms of the cases and what the status of the virus is in our community and in New Jersey before we make a determination to expand the amount of time that students are in the classroom.
Okay, okay. And then I just had another, I don't know if this is even any of my business, but as far as like the subs and like, I understand that's probably going to be like 1,900 a day with the added subs and the teachers that will be teaching from home and then the subs in the classroom. I mean, I was just at a conference through the American Academy of Pediatrics and the virus could be around, we can be dealing with it for a few years and even with a vaccine. So my question is, is like, do you foresee a long-term plan as far as teachers teaching from home and having the added expense of subs?
Again, I do not have a crystal ball that is going to allow me to predict, you know, when we might be able to adjust our model. You know, we've really got to open and get everybody in school and get that working. And then we will see what lies down the road. I just, there's no way to comment on that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Elias.
And I want to say again, thank you for that first step.
Okay, Mr. Hubbard?
Good evening.
Hello?
This is John Hubbard. I teach at Lazar. I'm also the MTEA Vice President. At the August 18th Board Meeting, parents were concerned that substitutes were going to be in the classroom teaching the kids in place of the teachers who requested the ability to teach remotely due to health concerns. It stated that the highly qualified teachers employed by the Montville Township Board of Education would still be teaching remotely and that the substitutes were simply providing supervision in the classroom for the in-person students. We have since come to find out that those highly qualified teachers were in fact being placed on unpaid leave and are being replaced by inexperienced, long-term substitutes. Now we will have inexperienced people who do not know the curriculum. They don't know the community. They don't know the culture of Montville, teaching our students. The educators that you replaced have decades of teaching experience, know the students, and know the community. They were prepared and looking forward to providing the best education possible to their students. Instead, they were ambushed by the board and central office. The teachers of Montville are professionals who deserve to be treated better. And I'm asking the board not to approve these replacements, but instead make the educationally sound, mindful decision to allow the more experienced teachers to be able to teach our students. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you for your comments. I do take exception to the word "ambushed", but you indicated that's what you said in your words. And we will now go on to the next one.
Mr. Riado?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Scott Riado, Roxbury resident, MTHS History Teacher, MTA President. I have several facility questions. I know that Mrs. Slunt has not given her report. Would you rather I wait?
No, you can bring them up now.
Okay, thank you.
I was, my understanding that representatives from the MTA met today with the administration to review several.
Yes, well, first and most importantly, I hope you and your families are healthy. And thank you for your tribute to Mr. Quaid. I knew him for over 25 years and he was one of America's best. And of course, thank you for recognizing one of our own, Chris Butchko, Morris County Teacher of the Year. Mr. Grau's point, yes, I'd like to thank Dr. Roftar, Mrs. Slunt, and Mr. Toth for meeting with some association leaders today to explain more about the Building Management System, or BMS, given that staff returns tomorrow. On that topic, I'm told there's no air conditioning in Valley View Rooms 30 and 34. Is the system reading that as well?
Are Rooms 30 and 34 the inner core rooms on the second floor?
30 and 34.
Are they the, in the second floor core classrooms and the ones in the center?
They may very well be. I was not actually in Valley View today. I was in William Mason and the high school.
I will be, I mean, what I can do is, off the top of my head, I would have to confirm that if you can't confirm that as being where those classrooms are located. If you want to give me your question, I can investigate it and get back to you. Off the top of my head, I don't know where 33 and 34 are.
Right. The question was, is the air conditioning functioning properly in those rooms?
Again, I'd have to look.
He's got it. He'll look it up and get back to you, Scott.
Excellent. Continuing on the topic of facilities, I'm certain that you are aware of the continuing snake problem at Hilldale?
We discussed that in length with your representative who were at the meeting today.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. In keeping with the facilities topic, while most of the buildings have hand sanitizing dispensers, they are not yet in every classroom and not yet filled. Staff returns tomorrow. The dispensers are the kind that you have to push, which means another service to be cleaned. Presumably, since your hands are dirty when you touch them, they should be cleaned after each person uses them. Will that happen? And were touchless dispensers considered?
As we indicated in emails to both yourself and the representatives who we spoke to today, we are not done preparing the classrooms for the opening of school on the 8th. And part of that is the putting in the soap bags that are put into those units. As to whether those need to be touchless, when you touch them with your dirty hands, an alcohol-based product comes out of the dispenser and you then rub it on your hands. That now makes your hands clean. When the next person comes and touches the dispenser, the same event occurs. Therefore, whether your hands are clean when you touch the dispenser does not affect whether your hands are clean when you walk away from the dispenser.
Thank you, Katene.
Agreed.
Next, Scott.
You know, it's interesting, Mrs. Slunt, you mentioned the opening of school on the 8th. I would disagree. I would argue that the opening of school is tomorrow when the staff returns. So maybe we'll just have to.
Mr. Riado, we have spoken about this topic as well as early as last week, that we are, as we have done every other year that school has opened, we are shooting for and still preparing the building up until the start of school for the students. That is no different than any other year.
Right.
As we indicated, not all of the rooms are completely clean. Not all the walkthroughs have been completely done. That is also consistent with what we have always done in prior years. There are definitely enough soap dispensers with soap bags in every building that if someone were to need a soap bag and the item's coming out of it, they would easily be able to find that in order to sanitize their hands. Are there other particular concerns that you have related to buildings not being ready?
Again, I would just disagree as to the definition of the opening of school. I know the high school roof is still being tarred.
You can disagree. And I think Mrs. Slunt is trying to get information from you so she can respond to you.
Yeah.
So if you have any others?
Yes, I do. The high school roof is still being tarred and part of the front lot is being taken up by equipment and machinery. When will the roof tar work be done and the machinery removed?
The start of school for the high school is the 21st of September. Those devices that are there for the roofing, as well as the roofing material and the equipment that is in the parking lot will be removed before the 21st of September.
Okay, not the 8th, the 21st.
They don't open on the 8th. The high school in Lazar will be opening on the 21st of September. Therefore, their first day of school is not till the 21st.
Very good. And Dr. Roftar mentioned a screening app. If you check off one symptom, like congestion, for example, as many of us have allergies, will that preclude your entry? You know, how sensitive are those settings? Are they adjustable? I know that you're asking the staff to use that app tomorrow.
Right, no. You know, one symptom would not exclude you. You know, the symptoms will, the information will be reviewed by the school nurses. And if they need to follow up with a particular staff member based on the information submitted, and the same would follow through with the students when the students are back in session. The school nurses will follow up if they have concerns.
Okay. So my hay fever allergy should not preclude me from entering the building?
If that's a normal occurrence and you know that that symptom is something that you experience annually? No, that should not exclude you.
Great, thank you for that. Thank you for your answer.
Scott, if you have.
Well, thank you very much for your answer.
You're quite welcome, Scott. Thank you. Next.
Elise Kerr?
Hello?
Hi. Good evening, I'm here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, my first question actually is in regard to the status of extracurricular activities and clubs at the high school.
Can we just stay with the agenda right now? And then I'll let you talk after the agenda is complete, okay?
Sure.
Because that's not on any agenda for any action tonight, okay?
Okay.
I will come back to you. Very good.
Anne Koenig?
Hi, good evening. My name is Anne Koenig. I have two kids in the elementary schools. My question for you, Dr. Roftar, is on the reopening plan. And specifically, for the last several years, there's been increased focus on school safety. uh for the last several years, there's been increased focus on school safety and security procedures in light of unfortunate events like school shootings. It seems many of the school entries.
Anne, what's her name, Anne? Could I just ask you to do the same thing as the previous speaker? That's not an agenda item tonight. We will follow protocol that we've been using. We'll do the agenda, and then we'll open it up at the end of the meeting for additional comments and questions, okay? We'll give you an opportunity.
We'll come back to you.
We'll come back. We're not gonna go away, all right?
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
No other questions at this.
No other questions at this time, all right? I would entertain a motion to move the consent agenda with the addendum. Motion by?
Can move.
Palmer?
Mike Palmer, second by?
Second.
Uh, Mike Rappaport?
Mike Rappaport, okay. Any questions on the minutes, which is item number uh J? I, excuse me, J is uh donations. Being a member of the Malvo Kuanis, I'm very happy to say that we were able to help those youngsters that needed, that received free and reduced-priced lunches to give them gift cards totaling just under $5,000. Any items on K? L? M? All right, roll call, please, Mrs. Slunt?
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Dr. Cortino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes, um, I'm going to abstain on the addendum.
Mr. Grau?
Yes. Thank you. Item Q, we don't have any uh closed session for item O. Item Q. Any old business? Item R, General Board Comments and new business? Seeing none, we'll move it now for those two young ladies that spoke a few minutes ago under item S, Public Participation. Now is the time, so please, Dr. Rovatar will click you in.
Right, I'm gonna uh respond to Elise's question with regard to the extracurricular activities. Um, we had, we've had an administrative council meeting, and I, I have asked for um, the, you know, the principals to provide me with recommendations uh with regard to activities that they feel can, uh, they can operate uh given our current circumstances, and I am awaiting that information from them. When I do receive that, we will review that and uh make any necessary recommendations to the Board.
Okay, Ms. Elias?
Elise, I don't know if you wanna, um, you know, I'll, I'll give you the floor in case I did not correctly interpret your question, or if there's, uh, you know, something else that you want.
Yes, you can hear me now?
Yeah.
So you can ignore my later raised hand, because I wasn't sure how to unmute. Okay, so um I, I hear you about, about getting a list. Um, I, I'm hoping that, that the district and the administrators are really gonna think out of our box, um, particularly for our high schoolers when it comes to the extracurricular activities, um, because you know, pretty much, our kids have lost a lot. Um, and they're trying to foresee their futures, and they're trying to foresee, um, you know, build their college resumes and having everything disappear from them um is very difficult, and um the extracurriculars also provide them with some of the socialization that they're missing as well. Um, and so, you know, in particular, right now, um, I, I am going to request that they take a look at the drama club, um, and the arts. Um, on the last board meeting, Dr. Rovatar, I did hear you um answer a parent question um about that, um, and stating that it was possible when we were on quarantine for virtual performances and those kinds of things, and um you know, I, I, I highly, highly recommend that that be considered for those students to have some kind of an outlet, um, because I really feel like the um, the arts can be performed, and we can figure that out virtually, um, at some level, understanding that, no, we may not be able to do some of those big giant performances, but if the amphitheater in town is being used for concerts, then the amphitheater in town can possibly be used for some concerts by our students as well. Um, no, that, that's just my two cents on that, as well as, you know, any other clubs that we can try and figure out virtually how they can participate in um at the high school level. Um, my, my second comment was in regard to um the discussion of facilities. And um, Ms. Slunt, I, you know, when you were um responding to uh the union um representative, um, I, I guess I was kinda taken aback by um perhaps it was, it was just the tone of the response, but um, the, the soap dispensers and being able to find another one somewhere else in a COVID situation is really not an acceptable response. So if you're not finding a soap dispenser, and you need to exit the bathroom and go somewhere else to get that is, is not an appropriate response.
There are soap dispensers outside the bathrooms, which are all fully functioning. We also have outside of every single classroom. I'm sorry, hand sanitizers, let me clarify. Um, outside of every classroom. I, I, the statement that was being made was that that may very well be true that the ones outside of every single class, the custodians are still completing for the eighth, which is the start of school. So, that there is not soap in the bathroom, that there is not water, or that there is not a hand sanitizing station.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Um, um, and I, I was just wondering if I could get a little, um, the virtual, um, the teachers that did request, um, they were um still going to be permitted to be virtual and have, um.
Absolutely, and I think I, you know, I didn't condition for those staff members who had requested. That is grounded in the fact that the majority of our that it, it is a better experience for those in-person students to having them rather than having a remote teacher requested, you know, or have indicated that the actual presence in the classroom um and a very thorough process of interviewing those candidates. Both have taken those recommendations very seriously. Um, Mrs. Konig?
This regarding school safety. And for, for the last several years, in light of unfortunate events like school shootings, level and dismissal procedures, at least at the elementary school, that there is the appropriate and necessary focus on COVID-related, and who is ultimately responsible for reviewing these and approving these measures.
Change. Um, the, the Department of Education and the, under the current circumstances, um, it is not appropriate to uh conduct fire drills. So, um, our teachers will be dealing with uh sharing that information with main and place. Um, you know, we still have levels to us. So I, I'm not, I guess, changes.
So, so for instance, um, the students, as I understand it, and, and so the kindergartner is entering I, we understand that from a COVID perspective, things in town has been that.